Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Environment Sustainability Committee Meeting Number Eight of 2023 on the 5th of September. Councillor attendance at committee. I notice all committee members are in attendance. Move to acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. Committee, are there any declarations of interest in matters on the agenda? No, we have no business outstanding, so we'll move to confirmation of minutes. The confirmation of the minutes of the Environment Sustainability Committee Meeting Number Seven of 2023 on the 10th of August. Ask for a mover. Mayor Harding, thank you. Seconda, thank you, councillor Fekner. Is there any discussion with regards to the minutes? No, then I'll put that. All those in favour, unanimous and carried. Thank you. For our next item, we have a presentation by Mr Jonathan Gregory from Denmark Hill Bush Care. He's agreed to come in today to give us some detail with regards to their efforts at Denmark Hill.
Thank you, Chair, Mayor and councillors. I thought I would just introduce Jonathan as one of our key environmental volunteers. So, Bush Care, as we all know, is a programme that was relaunched in 2019 and we now have ten Bush Care groups.
So can you say your name and your job title?
Oh, sorry. Stephanie Grove, team lead Environment Sustainability, Education Awareness.
Through the chair, thanks.
So, as the Chair mentioned, we've got Jonathan Gregory with us here today. And Jonathan is a Bush Care leader at Denmark Hill, which is located at Denmark Hill Conservation Estate. And Jonathan will be talking about his journey in the Bush Care programme, as well as the vision for the group and some key outcomes and events that the group have planned. Thank you. Welcome, Jonathan.
Thank you, Stephanie, and good morning, Jonathan.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here to talk about the Bush Care group. I'm a landscape architect. I've been doing that for twenty years. I moved into Ipswich about five years ago. And up the road is there is a lovely Bush Care or Bushland Reserve. The opportunity came up in complement with some of the works that City Council has been doing with that park to establish a Bush Care group, and I was very keen to be a part of that and have done that previously. For the past six months, we have been actively weeding and watering and planting some trees. And we've taken what was an overgrown gully to the, probably the north of the existing or the new playground, and turned it into sort of a Bush Care planting zone, ready for our big planting day on the weekend. One of our active members is a rotarian, and she has roped in her club to both provide some plants, which they've generously donated, and a bit of manpower on the weekend. So with her involvement in our regular group of about ten core volunteers, we're planning to plant two hundred plants over the weekend, mulch, fertilise and water them in. It'll then be our role to take care of these plants, as the trick is often making sure that they establish. And we'll be watering the plants for the next sort of six months to encourage that establishment. Particularly thanks to the council's installation of a tap and a hose to make that job a bit easier, because we've been currently bucket watering to date. With a hot dry summer ahead, this is pretty critical to what we're doing. Beyond the environmental side of what we do, which I think taps into a lot of community concern and community wanting to be involved in something quite progressive and quite sort of constructive, we have a range of volunteers from a variety of backgrounds and variety of age groups. And each is encouraged to contribute in their own way, whether that's the physical labour of planting and watering and mulching, or even baking treats for cups of tea afterwards. We encourage everyone to contribute in whatever way they feel comfortable. The plants that we pick and are going to be installing on the weekend are determined by the local regional environmental listing. So we're keeping in complement with the planting that is already there, and we're encouraging a greater diversity of plants into this gully area where it's a bit more protected, with a bit more soil and a bit less heat, to encourage local diversity of fauna and flora and getting the birds and the butterflies and the critters back into the park, of which we've seen evidence. Particularly when we plant the new plants, they're often dug out by bandicoots, is our current suspect. So with these new planting, there will be tree guards as well to stop them being dug up. So with this social activation on top of the environmental kind of benefits, people are coming together, meeting, trading experiences. We like to see a future where it will become a bit of a learning tool and an education opportunity, encourage people to get out into the park, use the park more, take photos, record bird life and be involved at that very grassroots level on a wider environmental sort of initiative. I think it's really important that people feel like they're getting their hands in the dirt. Planting a tree is a very powerful act, and I think this programme gives the opportunity to those who may not otherwise have it to do this kind of activity once a month down in their local park and build that social capital into the local communities. This obviously happens with council support, and we're very thankful for the support the council has given us to date, both in the manpower of Steph's team and the maintenance crews. And we see ourselves working in complement with those and working towards a combined vision for the park, which is to maintain and enhance its natural conservation value, as well as it being a sort of social hub for the local community. I guess the vision from here is both to establish and maintain what we've already put in. Come the summer, we will have a renewed fight with the weeds, given the new heat, the additional heat, and expand the programme both down the gully and maybe into perimeter areas where we can establish a buffer to the park from local or from private residences and areas that may be impacting on the park in order to discourage weed growth and potential disruption of that park. So overall, it's a very active and well-supported programme. We have a presence on Facebook and we get lots of positive feedback on that. We thank the council for their ongoing support and look forward to expanding the programme in the future. Thank you very much. Cheers.
Thank you, Mr Gregory.
I can take a few questions?
Yes, if you're happy to do so. Members of committee, I checked with Mr Gregory before and he's happy to take any questions from us. Oh, convince if that's okay. So initially as a statement, I've, as you know, visited on your working days on site regularly and am absolutely amazed at the progress that your group have made in that space. Particularly from the first day, when you see the challenge ahead and then the progress made that day. And then incrementally, as you've worked your way up the gully in particular, there were some days where some very extensive work had been done and the distance that you covered, particularly with the weeding, which is all, you know, hand pulling and no chemical used in that process. So that's outstanding. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And you touched on some of the higher environmental outcomes there. So if bandicoots are coming in and having a sniff around any of the organic matter that's in the ground with the new plants, that would indicate that the ecosystem there is definitely healthy to have.
It had a very disturbed history, as I understand it, but through these little interventions, the idea is that that encourages maybe, for example, bird life, which comes into the park, spreads the seeds around and lifts the overall environmental integrity of the site. So it is a part of a greater process. It's almost seeding a sort of, you know, to speak.
Nice pun. Yes, well done. So yeah, I suppose my first question would be, you have touched on it, but how have you intrinsically found the support from Ipswich City Council being there to support the goals of the group?
Yeah. No, we have felt supported by that, both in the provision of tools and buckets and the practical side of it, but also in the assistance of encouraging volunteers, putting it through the proper channels through council in order to arrange these days, of which we've had a lot of support, both down to the kind of, you know, just putting on an event from tables and chairs to cups of tea and things, but also the more strategic support about what we're doing in a part of a wider council programme that is sort of focused on this environmental rehab, probably fitting into that niche where maybe council does all the big stuff and then we can feed in and sort of segue with that and provide a bit of support to council while tapping into all those other benefits, but certainly working towards a collective goal.
Yes, so things like safety training prior to commencing.
We've had training. There's training in local. We all had to have first aid training to start with. But down the track, there has been mention of kind of herbicide training and tool training, maybe mechanical tool training. But if we get to it, but you know, it's good to know that that's there.
Yes, absolutely. That's the last thing we would want is something to occur due to people not being aware of limitations and what is a safe way to work in that environment.
And we're very conscious of that. And we start with a safety share. We all wear long pants and long sleeves, hats, water, sunscreen, and we stay away from the steep slopes. We stay away from the mines that are on site, so we don't go into those areas. And we have a fairly healthy protocol. If we don't sort of put your hand wherever you can't see it, if you sort of see any animals, particularly snakes, which we haven't, we stay away from them as well.
And as you've been progressing with your working days, how have you found networking with the other Bush Care groups? Because when I've been there, I've observed many of the other members from the other groups.
That's a part of the learning, and I guess this coming together of people who are interested in this sort of stuff, there is a shared knowledge. And we've had people from the Lorikeet Street Bush Care, and I've been to the Lorikeet Street Bush Care as well, and helped them out sort of on the alternate Sundays to our own. So I think that network and whether that's expanded into the future, I think is a very, you know, another sort of social benefit.
Absolutely. It's good cross-pollinating, is it? Did you see how I worked that one? And so my final question would be, what would you describe as the most important outcome that your group has been able to achieve during your time there?
To date? I think the most important outcome to date has been taking a patch in a natural conservation area and rehabilitating it to the point that it will now no longer spread further weeds into the park, have reduced the maintenance requirements of that area. And as a collective kind of group of local residents and neighbours, we've both improved that side and will continue to do so and expand that impact, but also the social stuff. Also getting the rotarians involved or getting the local kind of footy club involved or those kind of opportunities are sort of part of the wider picture of what we do. And I think, yeah, we're very proud of that. It's just sort of started quite small, but we've now got maybe thirty to forty, possibly fifty people coming down on the weekend, and we're going to put in a lot of plants, and that's exciting. And I'm happy to be a part of that and look forward to it continuing.
Yeah, so as well as in repairing our natural environment there, it's enriching the lives of many members of our community.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Fantastic. If I may, I'd just like to thank you, Mr Gregory, and your group for the outstanding work and the ownership that you've taken of the task to enrich our community. I'll just open up for if there's any other member of committee who wishes to speak.
Mr Gregory, thank you very much to the Bush Care group, the Denmark Hill Bush Care group. We are very active on social media and in the community, and you've done some amazing work. And it's just very uplifting to see what you're doing. What else can council do to encourage more volunteers to support our Bush Care groups? What's your suggestion? If you were the mayor for the day, what would you do to do?
Well, we've got a few strategies. We're both putting signs up in the park on the notice board, but also through the social media, we're putting it out to a wider audience. And doing letterbox drops and meeting people in the street as I use the space or as we use the space, people come up to us and ask us what we're doing. There's that kind of very much direct involvement. But between social media and letterbox drops and notice boards, I think, yeah, we're getting a very strong, certainly a hardcore of ten, often fifteen. Gets a bit hot and cold through the winter. It dropped off a bit, but we're looking forward to a strong summer.
Because I think, is it an eight o'clock start on a Sunday? Is it an eight o'clock start on a Sunday?
It's an eight o'clock start on a Sunday, so that's open to revision, but it'll work in the summer.
Thank you. And thank you very much, Mr Gregory. Thank you, Chair.
We had our three days of winter this year, so the cold wouldn't be. Any further questions from the committee? Mr Gregory, thank you very much for coming in. We very much appreciate you sharing your experiences and knowledge with us. And we look forward to a brighter future with you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity.
Our committee will move on to officers' reports. So item two is with regards to Bush Care Programme update and annual review. This is a report concerning an update and annual review of the Bush Care Programme from 2022 to 2023. The report offers an outline and overview of the progress of the programme regarding its aim to meet community needs and to rehabilitate council reserves and parks, and outlines operational recommendations for this and the following years. My call forward, an appropriate officer to ask some questions.
Thank you, Chair, Mayor and councillors. Stephanie Grove, team lead, natural environment.
Thank you, Ms Grove. Of course, the detail is in the agenda there. But could I ask you to just point out in particular the current framework that council is able to provide and what we would be looking forward to achieving in the future?
Thank you. Since 2019, the Bush Care Programme was relaunched to allow a lot more training and guidance for volunteers. Since then, we've got ten groups now formalised and registered into the Bush Care Programme, and that brings us up to eighty-one volunteers across the city. So the new Bush Care or revitalised Bush Care Programme, I should say, has formalised extensive training for Bush Care leaders, as well as all volunteers that are registered in the programme. It has allowed groups to undertake better annual planning. So we sit down with a council officer and do annual planning with each group, and that captures the vision for the group and also allocates funding for each of the groups. As part of that, we go through an annual events calendar as well, so we're not having two events on one weekend and allowing groups to invite community members to each of those events. For example, this Sunday is a Bush Care planting with Denmark Hill. As part of that, we've also allowed and invited all Bush Care groups to each other's Bush Care events. That hasn't been done before, and we found that really valuable, as you mentioned, Chair, with cross-pollinating or getting groups together, sharing knowledge. Each Bush Care site has identified very different ways to manage the site, from along the Brisbane River to our urban bushland as well. So we've identified different training techniques and different upskilling recommendations for each group that is specialised for those sites. And also, we have identified that through this revitalised framework, the importance of safety sharing. Mr Gregory mentioned each group goes through a safety share at the beginning of a planting. But we have got and engaged our safety team internally to come out on site and do testing of equipment, demonstration of equipment and specific training to ensure the safety of all of our volunteers. The one thing that I think our team is really proud of is bringing in rewards and recognition. So understanding that our volunteers are an extension of staff within council. And recognising um the work that they put in as volunteers. So it takes up an enormous um time, as you mentioned, and also early hours of the weekend. And acknowledging that they're doing that on a voluntary basis as well. Um, the fr- the programme has had, um has gone through a lot of updating in terms of relevance to. Um, better techniques and best practice for weed management as well, so keeping up to national standards. And then again, that um the national standards for volunteer recognition. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thank you, um, Miss Grove. Uh, so uh it, it is. Good to have it reiterated that as an organisation, council is um taking very seriously uh. The organisation's obligations uh in terms of supporting uh our Bush Care groups. And that it is done in a, in an appropriate way and, and delivered, uh well, I could probably say in a very friendly way. Um, uh which um supports and cares for our uh Bush Care groups. Uh, having said that, um. There is, there is a lot that has been achieved by these uh groups. In noting that, uh I, I do just want to point out that the. It's stated in the financial resource implications in the, in the report that this is all being done. Uh, funded under the Bush Care budget of twenty thousand dollars last financial year. So that is. An outstanding outcome for the uh, the, the funding that is provided. So I would probably uh tend to make an assumption that moving forward, uh from little things, big things grow. See, I've done it again, haven't I? Um, that, um, we could probably uh review that. In saying that, um, it has been stated anecdotally to me that. There is a lot more uh volunteers waiting in the wings. Um, wishing to be involved and, and there are um suggestions and nominations for other sites. I'm sure we have plenty of sites, so can you speak to that as to whether the, the, the numbers of. Uh, potential volunteers are, are definitely there?
Mm-hmm. So each year we go through a recruitment process for um groups and volunteers. Um, who have engaged interest in setting up a Bush Care site. Recognising and understanding the limited resourcing we do have to take on um a large number of Bush Care groups. We do understand um that there is a need and desire for community to engage and um take ownership over their local reserve and park. Um, during years of new Bush Care groups, for example, we've taken on three in two thousand and twenty three. Um, we have realised the investment that it takes for our offices to engage and upskill. The groups and provide that level of service to enable and empower them to take on um their sites. Once they feel comfortable in that and they don't rely on uh our resourcing as much or our support. We can then open up another stream of recruitment, so we can then provide a level of service to new Bush Care groups and leaders. Um, and of course, um, yeah, seeking more resourcing where we can. We're always on the lookout for grant funding as well coming into council, which I think is really valuable. Um, and also encourage our Bush Care leaders to apply for grants and community grant funding to support um. Projects that aren't sitting in their annual plans as well.
Very good. That definitely gives a better uh understanding as to where that possibly could go in the future. Uh, Council Fekna, you.
Um, are there currently any, um, I guess, interested parties to start new Bush Care groups that are in the wings waiting for a new intake? Or is everyone who has expressed an interest currently part of a Bush Care group?
Yeah, thank you, councillor. Um, I have heard from other Bush Care leaders at um community events that there are interested parties. But nothing official and formal has come through us, councillor.
Yeah, and there is an official process to doing that.
Yeah, so we will send out an expression of interest um where. New leaders can apply to be a Bush Care group or a Bush Care leader, um and then they'll go through a recruitment process that way.
Any further questions? Thank you, Miss Grove.
Thank you, Chair.
Committee, the recommendation is that the report on the Bush Care Programme update be received and the contents noted. Do I have a mover? Thank you, Council Fekna. Second, thank you, Council Quinsman. Open the matter for discussion. Council Fekna?
Um, just picking up on your commentary around the funding that's currently allocated to the Bush Care groups. I, I don't think that um it's enough money that council um has allocated to these particular groups. Um, I know that council officers work extremely hard to, um, you know, get back to all of the inquiries that we have from both of our. Yep, our leaders of those groups, but also members who um have questions of council. Um, I, I note that there's a kind of a, that there's an allusion to this being part of a broader discussion about. Funding arrangements and future budgets, but I think that that might be a bit too late in the tooth to be leaving further investment in the Bush Care. Um, group. For me, it seems like this is, you know, we're, we're on a winner here. This is an own goal here. We can be supporting our community who want to be investing in our community. Um, it has so many great social benefits. It has benefits for our environment and visibility. I think these are the things that we, we need to be focusing on and investing in when we know we're on a good thing here. And I just don't think that we can continue to deliver it for twenty thousand dollars a year. Um, you know, so I, I'd like to and I'll probably seek further information through the general manager of. Environment Sustainability and CEO in collaboration with yourself moving forward. What do we do to actually help in, improve, um, I guess, the funding and the resource there? I mean, there's the option and it was explored in the paper that's in front of us about casual contingency in terms of. You know, helping, you know, get those volunteer groups up and running, which is an option. Um, and I'd very much like to explore that because I think that we are on a good thing here and I only hear positive things come. Out of these Bush Care groups and the more that we can support them with, you know, their, with their needs. Um, to, to help facilitate that, I think is really important. So I'm picking up what you're putting down, Chair. I, I, I know you were alluding to it earlier. Um, but I definitely want to continue this conversation about potentially investing more in the Bush Care group. Before the, before the end of the financial year, whether it be through budget variation or operationally, we can deal with that.
It's very pleasing. Thank you, Council Fekna, that uh we are thinking the same thing and coming to the same conclusion. And those discussions uh that we need to have, um, I'm sure will ensue and then we can expand further with our uh elected colleagues.
It only takes like one planting day to realise how, how much work goes into these. Um, and on what is essentially the smell of an oily rag, um, it's just an amazing programme, so.
Yes.
Want to really see it succeed and, you know, capitalise while we do have that peak interest in these programmes.
And it's not, as you said, not just the environmental outcomes, it is the human and social um benefits that are definitely um derived. From these activities.
And what better advocacy than having um a team leader from a Bush Care group presenting to us this morning as well, Chair?
Absolutely. Not that one is any better than the others, but they're all, all great. They are all fantastic. Yes, but Denmark Hill is great. See you. You went to the States on it?
If I can, thank you very much, Chair, and thank you very much for uh the comments of support. I, I agree that it is a. A very modest uh budget allocation. I am confident that there'd be no need for a budget variation per se to, to come to the council. It's a modest amount and I'm very happy to look operationally with, with the. Relevant GM of environment and sustainability and if necessary, other GMs. But um we can, we can certainly look at revising the allocation to that, that programme this financial year.
That is fantastic. Um, thank you, uh CEO, for um detailing uh that the process would. Um, be able to be undertaken. Uh. The, I, I must also say thank you to the, to the teams who support our groups. Uh, because there is a lot of activity, there is a lot of work, a lot of qualified uh work that is done in the background. Uh, to uh make the outcomes possible, so uh definitely not um, uh definitely acknowledging that. See you. And thank, thank you uh through yourself to, to your staff for their dedication. Any further comments? Mayor Harding?
If I may, Chair, um, I just want to acknowledge the work of um the Birmack Catchment Association. Um, you'll see that they do lead four of these uh, uh Bush Care groups and they're very active, have been around for a long time and they're. And I've always found every time with my interactions that they're very knowledgeable, very passionate and, you know, put, they swear, they know, they, they live their values. And uh put the hard work in as well. So it's great to see the Birmack Catchment area also recognised in this as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, BCA definitely uh do a lot of heavy lifting in this space. Uh, they're very well organised and uh, uh, a long established um organisation within our community. Uh, I attend their um regular meeting every month that I, um, that I can and uh they um. They are definitely um, um, one of the um large driving forces. Any further comments? Discussion? No? Then I shall put the motion. Uh, those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Thank you. Item three is Sustainability Strategy Implementation Financial Year Twenty Three Progress Report.
Chair, pardon, Chair, just need to leave.
Pardon, sorry?
I'm just excusing myself.
Oh, sure, Mayor. Committee, this is a report concerning the progress in implementing Ipswich City Council's Sustainability Strategy twenty twenty one to twenty twenty six. There have been two financial years of the strategy implementation. The strategy sets out fifty two items for actioning over a five-year period. And as at the end of financial year twenty three, ten percent of the actions are completed and forty percent of actions are in progress. Some of the strategy actions are considered to be substantial projects within themselves and are implemented over multiple years. May I call forward uh the appropriate officer to answer some questions?
Good morning, Chair and councillors. Samantha Smith, Sustainability Coordinator.
Good morning, Miss Smith. Thank you. Uh, I suppose the uh, the glaring question uh would come from. E- even though the, the report is um quite in-depth and, and detailed and laid out for us, um. In the, in that detail that I just read, where uh ten percent of actions are completed and forty percent of actions are in progress. That still leaves fifty percent, so if I could ask you to further elaborate.
Sure. Um, I guess we, this uh strategy is over a five-year period. So we are halfway through this five-year period, so we're more or less fifty percent there. Um, so yeah, it leaves us an extra, you know, two and a half years to complete those other tasks. And projects. So if you refer to the implementation plan, we have mapped it out over those five years.
Yes, so I know that our future project is nineteen and eight not progressed.
So the eight not progressed so far more or less lead is, is in relation to resourcing and budgets. So, um, our ability to implement all of the actions out of the strategy. Is more or less reliant on how we budget and resource these projects as well.
Yes, I think that answers my questions. Uh, any?
I know it's not exact, but yeah.
No, no. Uh, well, have to take sustainable actions in a sustainable way, I suppose.
Yes, financial sustainability.
In a way that we can achieve them. Any questions? Um, Council Fekna?
Is there going to be, uh, and I know that this is a piece of work ongoing with solar panels across council-owned assets. Um, do we have a document that actually maps out, um, you know, where the most strategic places are? For the, the next investment in solar panels? I'm just thinking about, and I can't recall the, the exact amount. But I don't think it was a whole heap that we allocated to um solar projects in this year's budget. So just thinking about how we map out and gear up, you know, investment or whether it's even worth it or.
Yeah.
In that way.
Yeah, so we have done that analysis. A few years ago, we did a renewable energy plan. Which analyses all of our council's electricity consumption data. And then we ca- um, we, we honed in on those assets and sites that consume the most electricity. And that's what we, we're targeting as our first um renewable energy rooftop solar projects in the next financial year. So that being um, uh Yamanto Depot, Riverview, um. Red Bank Reserve, Sports Reserve, and we have the Ipswich Central Library Project. For which we have also received a grant for.
Hmm. And I guess some of, I mean, the fifty percent reduction by two thousand and twenty six, we're pretty confident that we might be able to hit that. Um, just by targeting some of the low hanging fruit. Is that like the bulk power, the bulk buying of the power as well? We're looking to kind of take a greener approach to that.
Yes, so there's, there's a couple of things in motion on that front. So part of the uh, the process of achieving that target is looking at energy efficiency um projects. And that also includes those rooftop solar projects, so we'll be reducing overall electricity consumption. Um, and then we will be looking at doing a pow- power purchase agreement. Which means that we will be purchasing renewable energy for all of council's electricity consumption.
Is that going to be at a much greater cost than our current arrangement?
Um, initial, uh, the market keeps changing. The electricity market is really volatile. Um, the last analysis we did over a ten-year period was a four percent cost difference. Um, but we expect it will be either cost neutral or over the time may, may even save us money.
That's great. And in terms of our reduction targets, I mean, that I'm just assuming would be a huge portion. Uh, for Ipswich City Council to be reducing just in that power agreement on itself.
Yes, so um in, in achieving that target, um, it's, it's looking at our scope one and two emissions. Uh, if you, are you familiar with scope one and two emissions?
Yeah, you've outlined them here in the report, yep.
So the scope two emissions are all of our electricity or emissions associated with our electricity consumption. So once we do that power purchase agreement, it eliminates all those emissions. So, um, if we look at our whole footprint, that's thirty three percent. If we look at just our scope one and two emissions, that's close to eighty percent reduction, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yep. I was following along, yeah, in the graph that you provided in the report and I thank you for that. Um. Um, I guess, and sorry to be jumping around.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sad aside. Uh, sorry, the, the date that we're due to renew our, our purchase power agreement. Is that this fin- is it this financial year or?
So we're trying to align, um, bringing in the power purchase agreement with the end of our. Um, large market and street light electricity contracts. So they're due for renewal in September and December next year. So the idea is that we'll have everything in place, that we, it's a contractual arrangement.
Yep.
To do a power purchase agreement, so that will switch across. Um, we'll have everything in place, hopefully. By the time those contracts are due for renewal.
Yeah, it gives you time to work through those processes, yeah, to get it right.
So we're currently working with procurement to achieve that.
Which is a perfect segue into my next question about sustainable procurement and how those conversations are going um with the team.
Uh, and look, it's a big change management piece. Um, yes, there have been conversations at this point in time. However, we, we do, um, I guess we're looking for, uh. I guess the low hanging fruit, where we can start embedding sustainable procurement principles and practices into our um contracts. Into some of our category, um, different categories that we can start feeding in sustainable procurement outcomes that we're looking for.
And I mean, are they changes that we make by having meetings and conversations and mutual understanding? Or are these processes that need to actually be built into our procurement policies?
Both, yes. So it is, it is partly, um, part of the process is definitely uh training and building awareness with. Um, well, I guess all staff, uh particularly with our procurement officers. But then it is also embedding those um practices and principles into our procurement documentation. So, you know, those contractual um documents that go out, large tender documents. That's where we want to start embedding them in the first instance and then moving through the different procurement categories to see where we can build in. Um, particular sustainability outcomes that we're seeking.
And I guess as sustainability, looking at the function as a business partner to other parts of the organisation. In a situation like that, are you? in a situation like that, are you, I guess, facilitating workshops for procurement offices? Are they being delivered by third parties? You know, I'm just conscious of the resource that exists within the sustainability branch versus what we're reasonably able to deliver. And when it becomes handed over, I see the function operating in the future in a similar way to customer experience in that, you know, that there is a role for the function to play as a business partner. But at some point, the different departments of council have to be open and amenable to actually, you know, making those changes that they need see, that they see fit and not necessarily always involving the sustainability branch. So just kind of wondering how it currently works as a business partner. There's obviously a tonne of priorities, how are we managing that?
We do need to resource it. We, in this year's budget, I have allocated for a secondment for a procurement officer to come and sit with us to start looking at how we can change either policy, procedures, processes, to start embedding that into our documentation. Beyond that, we do need to look at training. And you're right, we do want to move from, you know, we want sustainability to be business as usual. We want it to be sitting there for it to, for people to not even have to think about it. It's just part of the process and of the work that they undertake in their day-to-day operations.
But I guess until we get to, you know, that utopia, there's work to be done. And that's the, you know, the core function of the branch right now is just kind of, you know, highlighting the importance of it and educating the workforce.
Yeah, it is a change management piece and it is changing, you know, it feeds into evaluation criteria. It feeds into, yeah, just even upfront developing the scope of work that we need to, you know, that we want delivered sustainably.
Yeah, awesome, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fekner, yes, so from, if I can continue on what the point you were making that, my understanding is the sustainable procurement is the crux of achieving our goals. We've set the goals, we must achieve them. And it is the change, the change to that, that is the challenge. Once the change is achieved, then it is business as usual, it's what we do then. But transitioning from the way we have done things in the past to the way we need to do things in the future to be more sustainable. I would assume, though, that new assets coming online for the city in the future, such as the Southern and Western Resource Recovery Centres will be designed and built with sustainability in mind. I'm quite sure that the consumption there would be far less than a facility that was built, designed and built in the nineteen-seventies or eighties. So it will come online with already achieving those targets. What I have also noted is that, detailed in the financial resource implications, is that the planned for the twenty-three, twenty-four year operational expenditure, that is more than double than the two years prior. So see that that is clearly a ramp-up. But my assumption would be that from that expenditure, the ongoing savings from that would far exceed that spend. Would I be correct in that?
Depending on the project, so I guess when you're talking about rooftop solar, there is a measurable return on investment. So, you know, with rooftop solar, you expect, you know, in a five-year period, that that would have paid itself off. And then you're in the black. So it does depend on that type of, all the energy efficiency type of projects, yes, there will be a return on investment financially. But there are some other projects that are, you know, we are investing to move towards sustainability. There are other projects that require some upfront investment that will then, what am I trying to say, sort of offset the normal business as usual cost, but have better sustainability outcomes.
Some projects would be quite complicated and on first view, not self-explanatory such as, and I'm not even going to go there, say fleet is one that would be a very prickly apple to attack.
Sorry, which one, fleet?
Fleet.
Yes, so yeah, that's an example of us trying to transition to a lower emission vehicle fleet. So yes, we can swap out a normal fuel-consuming vehicle for an electric vehicle. So there'll be some initial investment, but over time, the total cost of that vehicle may be quite similar to a normal fuel, like internal combustion engine type of vehicle.
Yes, and the varying uses of components within the fleet need to be assessed on an individual use basis and whether there is benefit or not in undertaking transition.
Yeah, there is a discrete piece of work to understand what the EV transition looks like, is there not?
There is, and we have undertaken an initial, again, another initial analysis of what it means for us to transition our fleet to lower emission vehicles. We've called it low emission, but it did take into consideration electric vehicles, hydrogen technology. One of the first steps in this transition is really doing a rationalization of the fleet and then optimizing the fleet as well.
Yes.
Is that something that, sorry, through you, Chair, is that something that this committee has seen or been aware of?
It's early days.
Early days, okay.
Yeah, there is a lot of information out there, data from other local governments across the country who've undertaken. So it's good to learn from.
Yeah, yeah.
Those who've gone.
Sorry, through you, Chair, we'll be very keen to brief you on that when we get further in. But yeah, key reps from key areas across the council are coming together and working through the issues. And as has been said, optimization of the current fleet is a key first step and then moving forward. Thank you.
Any further questions? No? Thank you, Miss Smith.
Thank you, thank you, Chair and councillors.
Committee, the recommendation is that the report titled Sustainability Strategy Implementation Financial Year Twenty Three Progress Report be received and noted. Do I have a mover? Thank you, councillor Fekner, a seconder, thank you councillor Kunsman. I'll open the matter for discussion. Councillor Fekner? Councillor Kunsman, sorry?
Thank you, just a moment. It is entirely appropriate that we address the climate emergency, absolutely. And it's appropriate that leadership comes from council and it is imperative that we demonstrate our commitment. My question is, for a discussion, how can council remind residents that there's a personal responsibility as well? Because what we're looking at, what we keep hearing about is from all three levels of government that they have the primary responsibility. But in fact, residents, individuals have a responsibility as well. I'll just introduce that for discussion.
I would suggest that the residents of our city have a clear expectation of how their council, their organisation works and that the strive towards working more sustainably is undertaken. And I think for individuals, this is just my opinion, I'm sure that there are driving forces within the marketplace to encourage people to, individuals, to live their lives more sustainably. Councillor Fekner?
Yeah, and just trying to pick up and add to discussion through you, Chair councillor Kunsman. Yeah, I guess increasingly more we are aware of our obligations as people. But, you know, sadly, in recent years and months, it's come down to what the family budget can afford in terms of making those, you know, necessary amendments to your life. So I think that in many instances, people want to be doing better, but they don't necessarily, you know, have the financial capacity to transition to something. And the, you know, the upfront costs, you know, are quite high. So, yeah, I believe that our community, and we've seen it over the last three years, there's been a huge interest in, you know, doing better to try and get, you know, greater, you know, greater environmental outcomes across the city. We've seen that that's hugely important to our community, whether they can or not. I did want to say, I like that we're, you know, getting briefed. I can't believe that we're two years into the strategy already. And but it sounds like we're tracking quite well towards the fifty percent carbon reduction by two thousand and twenty-six. Huge, huge reputational risk if we don't. It's something that many in our community are aware of and it's a promise that we made and a position that we formed. And we interrogated quite heavily back in two thousand and twenty-one as to whether that was actually going to be achievable or not. So, you know, there's certainly, there's certainly the expectation in the community and I would hate to let our community down in that way. But heartening to hear that Miss Smith this morning has been having, you know, some really great conversations and what sounds like a few wins in that regard too, particularly when it comes to the power purchase agreement and taking care of the low-hanging fruit. I'm particularly excited about those ongoing and continued conversations with procurement officers and trying to unpack and understand how we can embed sustainable practices into procurement documentation moving forward. And of course, you know, these need to be balanced decisions. We can't just ram them in and see a huge cost blowout on big contracts. You know, that weighs on my mind heavily as well, you know. At what cost, you know, will we be implementing these moves to be making, you know, better and more sustainable decisions too? So I really appreciate the thoughtful approach to the initial discussions and training that will occur. And ultimately, council, you know, will have to decide, you know, what is the right financial way to move forward. But at least it's part of the conversation and I'm really heartened with the work that has been done today within the sustainability branch, considering, you know, it's relatively new. We've elevated it to a higher position in the organisation. We put a pin in it last year. We really, really want to see, you know, sustainability improved across the organisation. So the resourcing that it's had to date and the achievements and outcomes that, you know, have been able to be achieved is really a credit to Miss Cavanagh and Miss Smith and the team.
Absolutely, thank you councillor Fekner. Yes, I look at, when I think of the date twenty-twenty-six, seriously blink and it'll be here. So it is absolutely imperative that we keep the shoulder to the wheel, moving forward with the plan and constantly updating, of course, because technology changes so quickly. And having that awareness of how things are done elsewhere. We don't live on an island, well, Australia isn't an island, but here in Ipswich, we can absolutely learn a lot from others that have gone before us. And I'm very much an advocate of not reinventing the wheel, but just do things in that better way.
Yeah, and one final thing and to round out the discussion. I support and we have supported the approach to sustainability since the strategy was first adopted in that we weren't going to spend a whole tonne of ratepayers' money just buying offsets in places we don't know even exist in the world to ensure that our obligation is fulfilled. Like I know happens in other local government areas and lots of big corporates do. They farm off their responsibility, they pay the amount and they get credits which are offset, you know, often overseas. So I like our approach to trying to understand what our obligations are and trying to work with the community to move forward with our goals as well. I think that it's a really, a really nice way for us to come together with our community and be really honest about how we are improving things in our own backyard instead of just, you know, shelving our responsibilities elsewhere.
Yes, yes, I'm sure that greenwashing will not go on here. Just welcome back Mayor Harding. We are just discussing the sustainability strategy implementation. If you have anything you would like to contribute. Councillor Madison?
Thanks, Matt, I had to wait for a bit of a pause there, it's been such a robust discussion. Couple of things I wanted to add, councillor Kunsman hit the nail on the head. A lot of people are putting pressures on government, on all levels of government about making the changes, but it does fall back to personal responsibility. Being, you know, something of an amateur student of philosophy, a lot of individuals are happy to talk a big game on personal responsibility until they actually have to change their habits. So I think at all stages, the council should really focus on things like the carrot and the stick. Where do we offer incentives? And where do we offer robust compliance action to force people to lift their game? They're our two levers, I'd say, so to speak. And speaking of big sticks, I have to go into bat for our procurement team. So our procurement team has a number of wonderful professionals who are well-versed on social procurement principles. And social procurement obviously includes sustainability as an outcome. So I would say that if we want a better procurement outcome at this year's budget deliberations, make sure that you fund procurement to step up in that regard. Make sure that council adopts a more robust social procurement framework. Those are the two things that we can do as a council. So it's very helpful to talk about it, but, you know, this is something where.
I welcome the introduction of such initiatives from the Chair of the Governance Transparency Committee.
You make the investments, you use the principles. Use the skills of the people we have within the organisation and we will get somewhere. But more importantly, in closing, this is another matter where it's important that people's headspace isn't dominated searching for perfect. Perfect doesn't exist with these sorts of things. It's a constantly evolving process. We've just got to identify what we can do at the time to be better and just go through that process. That's the only way that we can proceed. We don't need to, you know, all of a sudden have the best fleet ever. We're an individual council with individual circumstances. Just because somebody else does something down the road doesn't mean that's achievable for us. But, you know, what we can do, we should, we should seek to do.
Thank you, councillor Madison, there's been many pearls of wisdom during this session and I thank you for that input. Yes, sustainable procurement is the crux.
But yeah, we do have a good procurement team, so please we'll remember that this morning.
Yes. Any further discussion? Thank you, committee. Seconded, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Unanimous and carried, thank you. Item four is Healthy Land and Water Network Membership Agreement Twenty Twenty Three to Twenty Twenty Six. This is a report concerning the renewal of the three-year network membership agreement between Ipswich City Council and Healthy Land and Water and the proposal to enter into a one-year membership only. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions? Thank you, Mayor Harding. Call forward the appropriate officer.
Good morning, Chair, Mayor, councillors, Phil Smith, Manager of Natural Environment.
Thank you, Mr Smith, go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. Mrs Smith, a couple of things, what does, what benefit does council actually get from this membership? And why officers are recommending a twelve-month membership? And what other options are there for monitoring health of our creeks and waterways? So they're my three main questions, but what benefits does council receive for the membership?
Thank you, through the Chair, fantastic questions, Mayor, and questions that I think we've been asking ourselves and the organisation for a while in terms of our continued contribution to healthy land and water. As you can see, it's around a hundred thousand dollars at the moment and it's been tracking up slightly with CPI, but the programme's been run for, I think, over twenty years. So cumulatively, it's a lot of money that we're putting their way. Um, what does council get? I suppose that that's the question that's most pertinent at the moment. Um. I can answer from a regional perspective, um, that twenty years of data is probably. Not surpassed in terms of any reporting programme. So the Healthy Land and Water run the ecosystem health monitoring programme. Which is associated with a report card. Uh, for council, we get that, uh, I suppose we're. Most closely linked to the Bremma Report Card. So that's an annual report card that kind of assesses the ecological health of the Bremma River. Uh, as well as all the other uh waterways across the region. Um, and is a bit of a, a bit of a test to understand, I suppose, the the health of that catchment. Um, as I, as I say, as a regional programme, it's probably non-surpassed and it really does give us a a a good reflection of what happens. Regionally within our waterways, uh, with a focus on Moreton Bay. Um, as a council, um, we probably lacks the finer grain grain detail to. Give us the information on whether the, uh, I suppose, whether the projects, programmes and actions that we're taking. Are having a benefit on the health of our waterway. So that's where the question really comes from in terms of the value. Um, we've done a little bit of a value assessment and I guess it leads to your other questions around. If councils focuses on understanding our own impacts or what we can control, um, and the impacts of our own projects. Then we'd be looking at a finer scale monitoring programme, which is something we could potentially deliver ourselves, um, using that money as an alternative. Um, so I suppose that's why we're here today and why we're looking at that twelve-month option is to really try and understand. Uh, again, um, I suppose putting putting Healthy Land and Water on notice a little bit and saying that we we're not necessarily getting. The products we want from the programme. Um, we want finer scale scale detail. We can have a look at what programmes we can develop in the next twelve months. That may offer us those solutions. Um, and we can discuss these with Healthy Land and Water over the next twelve months to see if they can have a part in that. Um, I think that's essentially where we're we're at at the moment. If that answers all your questions, Mayor, through the chair.
Okay, so so, um, why, why is the council recommending just a twelve-month part?
Yeah, sorry, and I and I was on that part, I suppose, at the end and and through the chair. Um, it's again to review. That value proposition, understand what we could get for that um investment elsewhere. Um, it's a, it's a fine balance um of, I suppose, monitoring our actions and also investing in on-ground. Um, improvements. Um, we need to know whether what we're doing is working, but at the same time, we haven't got an infinite budget to spend on. Um, kind of all things and everything. If we did, it would be something that we'd be supporting, but given the 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 fact that we've got a finite budget, it's about. Can we invest this better to inform our own management of our waterways, um, or indeed on on-ground options? So I think within the twelve months, we'd be able to. Have a better understanding of that and and pursue discussions with Healthy Land and Water to see if they have a role in that going forwards.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, Chair.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and I um uh would probably extend that just a bit myself by, uh. Are we actively aware of uh what other options would be available to council?
For our own mon- waterway, waterway, well, there's, yeah, I, we are within. There's plenty of, I suppose, pre-existing monitoring programmes, so things like REMPS, which are um receiving environment monitoring programmes that we could put in place. Um, that would directly inform um us as to whether our. Um, projects or management actions are having a direct impact on water quality and things like that. So there's a whole suite of pre-existing monitoring. Um, options available to us. Pulling those together in terms of a a a plan, a monitoring plan. Um, would be something that we could pursue over the next twelve months and understand in regards to costs. It's been something that we've been thinking about for a while. Um, the the key with monitoring is understanding what it is you want from your monitoring programme. Um, there's no point just going out and taking water quality uh monitoring for the sake of it. We really need to know what questions we're trying to answer. And that's where we're at at the moment. And I suppose that comes back to the the mayor's question previously is. Is the um Healthy Waterways Programme answering the questions that we want answering? Or is there a better and more efficient way to do that? So we can develop that plan and we can look at those options and put those into a, I suppose, an options paper. And hopefully, within the twelve months, we'll be able to come back to that. Better informed and be able to present that to you uh and the council.
Yes, tha- thank you, Mr. Smith. I I think it is those uh uh those options that you just suggested. That we need to be cognizant of so that um as a strategically, as a council, we are making. The uh best decisions uh on behalf of our residents for our um for our needs. Council Fekna.
Is the contribution schedule on page fifty-eight provided to us by Healthy Land and Water or is this something that we've? Built ourselves?
No, that's, so a statement uh within the appendix, there's uh their proposal, for want of a better word, which includes their um contribution. Um.
So the these, this data is, yeah, provided to us by Healthy Land and Water.
As a proposal.
It's kind of confusing to me that over the four years proposed here, the clean-up is always twenty thousand dollars. And when you think that cost increases year on year, are we getting less and less for the twenty thousand dollars? Is it just? Let's throw twenty thousand dollars at someone and go and do your best and and get it done up up until the value of twenty thousand dollars and potentially. Be receiving less and less over years. It doesn't really make sense to be issued for projections where. The clean-up cost is maintained over four years when we know how volatile it is to be procuring services, particularly as bespoke as the ones that do these clean-up works.
Yeah, a a valid point, and I don't think that's explicit within the proposal in terms of whether that is reflective on the levels of service we get. I think all we've got at this stage is the is the cost, so it would require a conversation in that regard. Uh, but as also as you allude to, in terms of the bespoke nature of the service, there's very few other people who can offer that service. The other point of note is that that is. Quite clearly a fee for service, whereas the other part is a membership fee um to the organisation for which they provide services, but it's. In the guise of a a membership payment, I suppose. So that's also something that we need to clarify.
Any further questions from committee? No? Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Committee, the recommendation is in four parts, as detailed in the agenda. I'll ask for a mover. Thank you, Council Fekna. Do I have a second? Uh, thank you, Council Kunsman. I'll open the matter for discussion. Mayor Harding.
If I may, Chair, look, I note that we are looking at a twelve-month membership. We did do that last year and I guess I was hoping that um. There'd be some progress on alternatives there, but um I I also note that um. We also have a an SEQ city deal with all three levels of government and part of that is a resilient rivers initiative and that's, I think, something quite exciting for us to. You know, we can only impact our part, so having a a catchment approach and a regional approach, I think would be really great. So. Very much looking forward to um having, I think, a bit, an improved programme um than, yeah, in going forward.
Yes, and uh.
I won't say anything else.
Won't say anything else, yes. Uh, resilient rivers, there's a um good outcomes uh there and I. Was sort of asking a question extending from yourself before as to uh what other options are there. Um, and uh. Responsibly, uh, as a council, we we need to investigate um all matters and and all options.
Yeah, and I think that's natural to do. I mean, the landscape has changed. I mean, we had the, um. We had Shane Newman with his election promise come to fruition for Blair in that. Um, they're gonna co-invest in waterway improvement projects with us, the local government, and we're, um, you know, edging. Closer to actually receiving those monies. They've been disseminated to the state now and we just need to work with the state to actually access those monies and. Um, that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the next three financial years that we didn't have before. So. Um, not only are the, you know, are things changing externally in terms of those providers that are out there in the market for us. I mean. Our own investment has increased internally and we're able to achieve significant investment like that as well. So. Um, yeah, lots to try and really hone and the team's got a bit of work ahead of them to try and ensure that, you know, we. We operate in a very strategic way and maximise the value that we get out of these services.
Yes, and it is those very uh visible and measurable uh outcomes and deliverables. Uh, from uh investment like that, uh, that you're talking about, that um we definitely need to also uh keep it a four. Um, you know, it. A bit cliché to say if nothing changes, nothing changes, but uh things need to change. Any further discussion? No? Then I'll. Put the motion, those four. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Item five is Get Ready Queensland Week twenty twenty three. This is a report concerning Get Ready Queensland Week twenty twenty three and the community education awareness activities that council will carry out. In the lead-up to that initiative which aims to increase disaster risk awareness and preparedness in the community. May I call forward the appropriate officer to answer some questions? Thanks.
Good morning, Chair, Mayor, councillors. Matt Pinder, Disaster and Emergency Manager. Pleasure to join you as always.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Pinder. Uh, we've passed Meridian. Um. Uh, my uh questions would be, um. I'll frame it with the fact that this is annual recurring and it is a very important, um. Activity that that we undertake as a local government to uh assist our community uh to be aware. And um I do note within the agenda uh that the um. The proposed events and their locations is quite extensive, uh, which is heartening to see. Um. What I probably would ask is if if you could just detail uh for us for any anybody in the community that's listening. Um, the the real um message, the true message that we're trying to deliver.
Absolutely, thank you. And look, that list of uh events is also courtesy of the National Emergency Management Agency and. Uh, some funding that they provided for a grant to have an officer on board to do that. So sincerely appreciate the federal government's uh support there. Um, so look, the key message is for. Get Ready Week Queensland. It's all about residents, community and businesses, understanding. What things, disasters, disruption events, may impact their lives and how they might be impacted. But better still, thinking about the things that they can do to prepare for that. And if something happens, what can they do to respond and recover from that? Once they've had a bit of a think about that, it's about writing it down and making sure that they know that they've got a plan, that they can talk through their family and friends with. The next part of that is uh some simple things like having an emergency kit, um, and then that goes on to doing things around their home. So in a core, the Get Ready Programme is really about understanding how you can be impacted at an individual level. And what actions you can take to prepare yourself, your home, your family and friends.
Yes, uh. Noting that uh as a state Queensland uh endures more um natural disasters and and weather events than uh. Any of the others, uh, any of the other states, uh, that as a local government locally, um, we need to. Definitely work towards uh assisting our community to um gain that understanding of. Developing that plan. Yeah, that is the is the crux that I was uh aiming for earlier, that um. They're planned individually, for themselves, as a person, as a household. And then, but also thinking as well with regards to. Their community, their their street, their locality, and knowing what can be coming, uh, what is forecast. Uh, if it's able to be forecasted, um, and um how and where to go. Um, we have seen in the, just in the last week, um, with the um. The highest um fire warning um being um stated for uh neighbouring regions. That it really hits home, that uh there is the possibility that uh things may happen and that. Even though people live very busy lives, uh, we need to ensure uh the safety and wellbeing of our community. Um, do you have any advice for our community in terms of how to achieve that?
Look, first and most importantly, uh, come and see us at one of these days and have a conversation. Uh, there'll be some resources there to provide you assistance. Um, but I do also wanna talk about, and it's actually quite fortuitous that we're part of the Environment Sustainability Committee. And I heard Mr. Gregory, a guest speaker from our community, talk earlier about uh the bush care group group at Denmark Hill. Um, that is a really fine example of building resilience within a community. So what we've have there. Is a a group of individuals going up to an area that is prone to bushfire. Uh, they're weeding, they're replacing them with native plants, which makes the area more fire retardant. But we also know from all the research, people that recover best from disaster events are those that have some sort of social connection or belonging. And the ability to form groups and networks and work with each other individually, um, and then as a collective, is absolutely instrumental. So even initiatives, council is doing indirectly like bush care. And that the community is getting on board with and taking leadership and ownership of build disaster resilience. So it's not just about what you can do as a plan with your plan and understanding house, but how can you integrate with others? And do those resilience-type activities. Um, noting that this season, fire risk is probably one of the things that we'll need to consider. And in particularly uh grass fires, uh, and they will move quite fast throughout the area. So what we're gonna see is. Big plumes of smoke over the place, um, and it'll often not uh often look worse than it actually is because the grass fires are quite hot, moving fast. And just burning up. So some tips that people can also do with that in mind is uh. One of the easiest things is make sure you're cleaning around your home and making sure that there is some sort of break between uh your home. And any neighbouring uh bushlands, houses where you can.
Yes, and noting that um, you know, it's not just um personal assets that are at risk, it is still uh. The uh the health and um safety and wellbeing of of people. And that particularly with uh grass fires, uh, the wind direction can be uh from any direction, but can also change uh during uh. A burn event, um, and that uh that uh smoke uh can very much uh affect. Um, areas that are are densely populated now. So, um, we have um large areas of grassland that that do. Uh, border up to um residential areas and and that is something that needs to be um kept in mind that. Particularly those uh people in our community who suffer respiratory um ailments uh will be greatly affected.
Absolutely.
Uh, now, I I just wanna point out again that uh I haven't counted how many there are. You could probably tell me uh of those uh planned events. Uh, but I just wanna state that it's, it it is great to see that they're, they're not just at um council facilities. Uh, your team is going out into uh shopping centres, um, all sorts of um locations. Uh, in including, uh, it it's great to see the story in toddler time, Ipswich Children's Library uh is going to be get-ready themed. Um, I don't think anyone's too young to to uh start learning um uh about being able to um get ready. Uh, and uh, you know, um, also Youth Sustainability Summit, um, having a um a stall there. That's uh, that's very good, I must say, uh, good planning. Uh, how how many members in your team will be uh? Scattered across the city during, because that is just during the the um, a bit over the the month, a month and a half?
Yeah, so there'll be uh three team members uh delivering on all this work and working very closely with the libraries. And it's really important, we acknowledge the libraries, they've been. Absolutely fantastic and stepping up in this space. What we also know from the research there is that to generate behaviour change. We need to bring young people on board and libraries have been absolutely essential in doing that. So we do wanna thank them and acknowledge them.
Very good. And uh will the uh our emergency services partners uh be involved?
Uh, they uh have their own campaigns that they'll be doing and some door knocking in this one, not specifically. Um, but what we do is we ensure that our messages are coordinated and that we're sending those dual messages. So we meet with the. Fire service to understand what the risks are for those seasons and then potentially where to target. Um, based on their information and advice and same with SES. So whilst they won't be physically. At the event with us, um, they'll be with us in spirit, so to speak.
Very good. Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Pinder. Very enlightening. Committee, the recommendation is that the report titled Get Ready Queensland Week twenty twenty three be received and the contents noted. Uh. Do I have a mover? Thank you, Council Kunsman. Second up. Thank you, Council Madison. Uh, I open the matter for discussion. Mayor Harding.
Um, just to say that the Get Ready Work is a really important programme raising awareness in our community. Uh, and for us. Everyone has a responsibility to have plans for their own home and their own families, to be as best prepared. Um, it's great to see the twenty-five pop-up stalls organised right across Ipswich, so our community has a really great chance to uh be as informed. be as informed as possible. And that's how we build resilience as a community. I think it's also important to let people know that councils obviously does a lot of work when it comes to hazard burning as well, which is really important in the upcoming bushfire season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any further discussion? No? Then the recommendation is moved and seconded. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Unanimous and carried. Thank you. Our final officer's report, item six, is SES Week 2023. This is a report concerning State Emergency Service Week in September 2023 and council's recognition and the importance of the SES, a partnership between the community, state and local government. May I call forward an appropriate officer to answer some questions? Four minutes.
Matt Pinder, Disaster and Emergency Management Officer, still.
Thank you, Mr Pinder. Yes, the, the, the report is self-explanatory. However, we all love our orange angels and it would be remiss to say anything, anything other than they need our support. So could I ask you to detail?
Absolutely.
How, how council as an organisation will be promoting SES Week.
Thank you. So SES Week, it is a partnership between local and state government and the community. It's often not known that council provides a significant portion of the funding, so that includes facilities, vehicles, trailers, operating costs, administrative support and so forth. So we have a really strong vested interest in the SES and to recognise the amazing work that they've contributed over the years, not just in flooding events, but also in searches for missing people in conservation estates to assisting at community events, Ipswich Show, helping out wherever they can and dedicating their time and efforts and expertise. We really want to say to them, well, look, we see you and we value you. Part of that will include lighting up One Nicholas Street through Orange during SES Week. And again, thanks to the Nicholas Street precinct team for their support there. The SES volunteers requested a photo shoot, so we're having one of council's expert photographers spend some time photographing at the One of One Nicholas Street here. And how they intend to use that is for their recruitment campaigns and, and things like that. So they were really after some support to get collateral and marketing assets. We'll also be doing some internal promotions, so making our staff aware of what the SES is and what they do and how they're part of council. Promoting them through Ipswich First, so making sure that the community is aware and using Facebook as a boosted post to ensure that, you know, we can reach other areas of the community. We'll also have information about SES at our stalls so that people can learn about joining because recruitment and retention of volunteers is one of our biggest things. And that just doesn't go for the SES, although we are recognising them here specifically.
Spinner, I'll just quote from the, the report that locally the Ipswich city SES unit comprises 186 active members from groups based at Goodna, Marburg, Rosewood and Ipswich. We need to point out that those 186 members are volunteers. They give of their personal time for their, their training, to develop their expertise, to be able to respond in those times when they are dearly needed. How many members have you, do you have planned for this, to be involved in SES Week?
So the South East Region and councillors were invited, were hosting an event for SES to celebrate, come together for a barbecue. So all of the 180 volunteers have the opportunity to do that. They've also requested, which council is supporting, a bit of a private barbecue just as members because they really want to get together as a group and debrief after what has been a very long year and some of the effects of February 22. So all the members will be invited to that. And then down the front here, we'll have a number of members, an unspecified number at this stage, coming down for Alfredo shoots for those marketing materials.
Yes. That is fantastic that they will be highlighted in that appropriate way for the city to say thank you for their, their time and their efforts and their dedication to their fellow community members across the city. Committee, the recommendations of the report titled SES Week 2023 be received and the contents noted. Do I have a mover? Council Fekna, thank you. Seconded, Council Madison. Thank you. I'll open the matter for discussion. Mayor Harding.
If I, if I may, Chair. Are the SES volunteers providing invaluable support to the community during times of disaster? And we've seen it many times here in Ipswich. You know, we, we attend their many barbecues and see them during that, during these tough times. Chair and also Council Quinsman. We see them, first hand, they go above and beyond under really trying conditions. And I think it's absolutely vital that we honour the work that they do in our community. Our Ipswich City SES unit comprises of 186 active members from groups based at Goodna, Marburg, Rosewood and Ipswich. And have a long history of helping the Ipswich community after disaster events as well. So I welcome the opportunity that we, you know, stop during SES Week, think of them and honour the, the commitment of service and the volunteering that they do for our community. They're a great bunch of people. If you're looking for, looking to volunteer with an organisation, I strongly recommend the SES. And I hope during this week that a few more people put their hand up and join a really great group of people.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the SES Week is being celebrated between the 9th and the 17th of September. I actually went and bought myself a brand new orange tie for, for the week, so I look forward to rolling that one out. Any further discussion? No? Then I'll put the motion, those in favour. Unanimous and carried. Thank you. There are no notices of motion, nor matters arising. And so I'll close the meeting at 12:33.
And Chair, I've had, if I may, I've had a request first to have the.
Yes, I got, I got a text message from the Chair of the next committee. Thank you, Mayor. So we will, do you want an hour? Come back at, come back at 1:30. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chair.